Mr. McFarland?
He'll bow with me. Father, we thank you for this chance to be here today to represent our community. We ask you that you give us wisdom, Lord, that you grant us compassion to help us make the decisions that are best for the community. Father, we thank you for what you do for us and how you love us. Amen.
Amen, Ansel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here we go. Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, May 19th, 2010. And as a reminder, please turn off all electronic devices. I love it when that happens early in a meeting. All right. It's wonderful to see so many people here tonight. We're pleased and honored by your presence. I know all of you are interested in our city and what happens, and today is no different. We have the beginning of our budget review. The city manager and staff members have been working diligently, actually probably since January, to provide us with a proposed budget document for the 2010-2011 fiscal year for our city. And we plan on beginning to go through that budget document today. There will not be presentation by members from the audience today, and we do not have a public hearing today. There is a public hearing on our proposed budget that is scheduled currently for June the 10th. If you are interested in talking about our public, in our public hearing for our budget document, June 10th will be the day that will be available to you as we currently have that scheduled. There'll be more information to that in the future. Again, we have a number of people who are here with us today, and I suppose that many of them from outside agencies, which are asking for some funding of some type from the city, and we are certainly happy that you're here. Are there any questions or comments before the council begins our budget review from the council members who are here? If not, I'll ask Mr. Lyons if he would to give us a short budget overview, if he will, based on what he has proposed for this fiscal year.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and members of council. It is an honor to present the proposed budget to you. This year's budget was certainly one of the most difficult budgets that we've had to try to put together. And over the next couple of minutes, I think I want to try to give you a snapshot of the current environment, the process we use to develop the budget, the conditions that we have had to react to and deal with, and some of the exciting plans we do have that are located in the budget. So I've got a short PowerPoint here that I'd like to share with you.
Before you begin, we have a number of people who are standing in the rear, and I'd like to ask you to take a seat, if you will. There's plenty of seating available, and we'd love for you to please be seated. Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Lyons.
Okay. So what I'd like to do, just as an overview of the budget, is tell you a little bit about the budget goals, overviews of our revenue and expenditures, and after we finish up with this overview, we'll be glad to start presenting the individual departmental budgets. We started the budget process with one-on-one meetings that we had with the city council members. And as we talked with each of you, we wanted to find out what you felt was going to be important in the upcoming year. Because I wanted to take that message that I heard from you and share that with our department head so that we could build a budget that was consistent with the direction that you gave us. And in those conversations that I had with you, really three goals became apparent that really captured, I think, the essence of where we were going to go with this upcoming budget. Those three goals were safe and livable neighborhoods, strong and sustainable financial and economic health, and excellent service with a focus on customer service. So I took that message and began to share that with the members of our staff so that as they put their individual budgets together, we use that as a target. It also became the criteria as we began to make very difficult budget decisions of what was going to be able to be recommended in the budget and some other items, while may have been good proposals, something that we couldn't afford. So and goal number one, safe and livable neighborhoods, you'll hear more about this in the individual departmental budget presentations. But in that goal of safe and livable neighborhoods, we've included three new police officer positions. We've included 11 replacement police cruisers. We've recommended the purchase of new fire equipment. That includes the receipt of two new aerial trucks that we'll receive this year, that total over $1.2 million. New safety equipment for the fire department in our neighborhoods. We knew that was a priority focus for the mayor and council. So we've got an extension of our Greenway project, studies of the South Church and Broad Street corridors that we will conduct internally with our existing staff, and drainage improvements in our neighborhoods. The second goal of strong and sustainable financial and economic health, one thing I know we have been very diligent about is maintaining our tax rate. And while this was a reappraisal year, the tax rate that is proposed in the budget is not a tax increase. The tax, property tax rate for Murfreesboro would be the one that was recommended by Mr. Bowden and the state of Tennessee, which would be $1.27 per hundred. This is the 12th consecutive year that there would be no property tax increase. Secondly, we'll implement the new retirement plan. As you know, we've got the defined contribution plan that takes effect July 1. We're recommending a comprehensive analysis of our health insurance. Mr. Godwin will speak to that shortly. The adoption of financial policies, a reduction in the reliance on fund balance, and a right sizing effort that we'll speak to also in more detail. Thirdly, the council talked about excellent service and customer service. So in the budget that we have presented to you, we are proposing funding for a customer service training program for our city employees. They do a great job. We deliver excellent service, and we do it with a smile on our face. But customer service is something that you don't ever sit down on, and continuing to improve our skills in this area, we think is very important and also be helpful in helping our employees deal with difficult situations. So the customer service training program was certainly one of the leading programs for this year's budget. We also will propose the creation of a new athletic division in our Parks and Recreation Department to better align how we deliver service to our residents. We have many, many youth and adults who participate in sports programs in Murfreesboro, and this creation of a division in our Parks and Recreation Department, we think, will help deliver service more efficiently and effectively to our residents. And lastly, there's other capital projects such as transit shelters. The Rover system has been operating now for a couple of years. I think we've gotten a good feel for where we've got people waiting for the bus. So there are some federal grants that would fund the transit shelters. So those were the three goals. Those are some of the main programs that are lined up with the goals that the mayor and council had set for us. And once we got a sense of that, really, the first thing you need to do is take a look at the landscape and the current conditions. And it really starts with revenue. And the revenue picture this year was very different than we've had in prior years and really caused some of the difficult decisions that are located here. Assistant Jim, Assistant City Manager Jim Crumley is going to speak to you on the revenue piece.
The three major goals of safe and livable neighborhoods, maintain our financial strength and our basic economy, and then focusing on customer service, have all been limited by the economy that we're working into. The graphic that's on the screen now is really a breakdown of what part of our income comes from local, state, and federal sources. If you look at our revenue picture for next year, the budget shows a little over $2 million in new income. When you factor out the grants coming to our transit system through the efforts of our departments as securing money for energy improvements and other areas, the actual income other than grants for the city next year is only up $226,000, less than one-fourth of 1%. And that is a truly different picture than what Murfreesboro has faced for a number of years. As Rob has mentioned, the tax rate itself continues to come down with each reappraisal of real estate. There is no proposal for a property tax rate increase in this budget. We're expecting approximately three-quarters of $1 million in new property taxes in the next year from the reappraised values. The graphic just gives you a visual picture of how the tax rate itself stepped down with each and every reappraisal that's taken place. It's now been 12 years since city council took any action on changing that tax rate. One of the things to consider, not only in this budget, but in the budgets to come, are that our three major sources of income, we're dependent on one-third property taxes, one-third sales taxes, and one-third from all the other fees, charges, and taxes that the city raises. Of our three sources of income, only the local option sales tax has grown faster than the total budget for the last decade. And we are now looking this year at potentially being $1.8 million behind our estimate for the local option sales tax. That has a big negative factor on the coming budget and potentially in years further out. Property taxes are dependent upon growth, and as you well know, growth has been one of the things that has been curtailed in the recent economy. This particular graphic that we've just put up now illustrates how little growth in income we have to work with in this current budget. You can see for the past 10 years, the city has had a substantial amount of new funds to work with in developing their budget document. You can just barely see the 2011 bar on this graph. Growth has been a driver for the city for a number of years, and growth in this budget is one of the things that is absent. New construction and the resulting income that we derive from new construction has slowed. When we look back at the building construction figures for 2009, the depth of this decline was pretty evident to us. It's the lowest year of new single-family home starts since 1991. It's the fewest number of building permits issued by the city since 1995. It is the lowest dollar value of building permits issued since 1998. That lower value of building permits issued will come back and affect us in future budgets as it translates into new property tax spread. We put some graphics up in terms of the number of permits that the Building and Codes Department has issued, and the value of those permits. You can see in 2009, we've had substantial drop in the value of new construction and the number of actual permits issued. Likewise, the peak in 2004 for the construction of single-family residents. One of the things about a single-family construction start is how many local sales tax dollars it drives, not just the construction materials used to build that house, but the furnishings, the carpets, the other things that all go into building a new home. All of those have taken a toll on that local sales tax collection. This is the graphic of the last 10 years in the local sales tax collection. You'll see that we're predicting for 2011 that we'll be approximately at the 2009 level of collection. The $1.8 million reduction in the current estimate on local option sales tax, we're proposing a modest 1% increase over what we believe we'll collect this year. But that does not bring us back fully to our 2009 sales tax collection level. Unemployment rate, these are all March numbers for the last 10 years. You can see until this downturn in the economy, Murfreesboro's unemployment rate hovered right around 4%. For the last two years, we've been at 9.7, and now at 10% in the month of March. Both of those numbers are going to impact our future local sales tax collections as folks who are underemployed or still looking for employment won't have the disposable income to spend in Murfreesboro stores. One of the items that has come forward recently from our City Management Association was a review of 46 AAA bond-rated cities and what they have done in this economic downturn to sustain their financial abilities. We looked very closely. There were 16 different methods that these AAA cities rated were using. Two or three of those do not apply to us because they affect unions and union contracts. But of those, we're doing, of what's, of eight of 11 strategies that AAA bond-rated communities are using, we're also using here in Murfreesboro. The ones that we have not used, we have not raised taxes or fees at this point in time. There are no fees or charges that are being proposed or increased in this budget. There is no general property tax increase proposed in this budget. We have not chosen to reduce work schedules or furlough employees as a cost reduction item. At this point, we have not chosen to lay off employees temporarily as a cost reduction item. Those were the four major strategies that top-rated, AAA-rated bond communities have used that we have chosen at this point not to use.
Once we took a look at that revenue picture, it really began to drive some of the very difficult decisions that we unfortunately had to recommend to you. We will get into these in more detail in the departmental budgets, but again, staying big picture, part of that led to a recommendation to rightsize. The city has actually, over time, had 48 positions that we've eliminated without laying off an individual. We've tightened our belt. When a position would become vacant, we would not fill it back. We've actually taken 48 positions out of the budget without it affecting an individual employee, again, trying to do what we needed to do in this difficult time. However, with the revenue picture that Mr. Crumley just explained, it did cause us to recommend a right sizing in several growth-related departments, solid waste in our yard waste program, planning, engineering, and building and codes.
Go back to that slide.
Yes, sir.
Go through that once again.
Yes, sir. There would be one position, after looking at the workload and the workforce, again, some of these cuts weren't just budget-driven, but taking a look at the workload and the workforce. We are recommending one position in planning and engineering, two full-time positions in building and codes, seven full-time positions in solid waste. Additionally, there is a recommendation not to fund one part-time position in city administration, three part-time positions in solid waste, and one part-time position in the judicial department. That position is currently not filled. So that would generate savings this year of approximately $400,000. The biggest impact on the right sizing effort is in our solid waste department. Again, none of the recommended changes for right sizing is a reflection upon the employees' effort, their work ethic, or the job that they're doing. We've got great employees. But we looked at our yard waste program, and we are currently, as long as, you know, in typical weather and times of year, we're typically coming around approximately once per week for yard waste collection. And looking at what other communities are doing, the most frequent schedule I saw was biweekly, which is the recommendation that we're bringing to you, that instead of coming by every week, we would come by every other week. But there are a number of communities that collect monthly, quarterly, or even just once or twice a year. So we're already providing a very high level of service. This adjustment in our service level to go from weekly to biweekly would save approximately $300,000, not only in the personnel costs, but also an estimated $70,000 in fuel. I think we can still deliver great service to our residents, but this is one of those areas where we felt like we could adjust our service levels given the revenue picture. Additionally, in our growth-related departments, we see our building permits down 50%, yet our staffing levels, while we adjusted them and added employees as we grew, we haven't brought our staffing levels down, even though they've worked hard. We have not brought our staffing levels down with the corresponding decrease in permit levels. And while, in the planning and engineering department, while the site plan work has been pretty level and pretty steady, there's been significant decrease in the number of plots and annexation studies, and I know you've seen that on your agenda. Now, the city last year nearly faced a layoff. We had those included in the budget and at the last minute made some revenue changes and were able to avoid that last year. But the mayor and council also adopted in anticipation that that might be a possibility last year, a policy for reduction in force, and it sets forth the criteria. It works its way down through that progression of probationary status, performance evaluation, seniority, job qualifications, and finally, if all things were equal, place of residence. Realizing that this is a very difficult decision to make and a very difficult recommendation to make, we are recommending a severance package for those employees that would, you know, over and above what they'd be legally entitled to regarding all accrued vacation and comp time and unemployment compensation. We would recommend with severance agreement, a lump sum payment of two months' salary, and also some severance services where there would be some outplacement and some professional help to get the employees some assistance to see what would happen next for them. About done here. The recommendation on employee compensation, as you know, we've got a market-based pay plan. That market-based pay plan does talk about pay increases being budget-driven. And unfortunately, with that 0.25% growth in revenue, the money just was not there at this point in time to recommend employee raises effective July 1. But our folks have worked hard. There was no raise last year, and it would be my recommendation that we defer a decision on pay increases until February. In February, we will have the results of the Christmas shopping season. We hopefully will be in a better position to see if we've got funds available for employee raises, which I fully support. We just don't have the money right now. So my recommendation would be that we defer that decision until February, when we get a clearer picture about where we are at. Now, the city did provide raises in fiscal year '09, which included a 1% increase in the job table. And after that 1% adjustment was made in the job table, then everyone moved forward a step, which is 3.5%. And this current budget year, fiscal year '10, was the first year that I could see since fiscal year '92, and employees did not get a raise. But again, I want to stress that my recommendation would be that we defer that raise decision until February. Finishing up here, you will see in the budget document this year, we have given you a great deal more information. The Government Finance Officers Association has criteria for a budget award. We have won the audit award with Ms. Right, Ms. Tucker's assistance in our auditor for a number of years running. They have a companion award for budget, and it really tries to take the budget document and become a vehicle that we can communicate with the elected officials, and more importantly, and as importantly, the community, to talk about the policy and the financial policies of the city, our operations, and how do we communicate what we're going to do. And so we've included a lot more in the way of descriptions and goals, and you'll hear more of that as each of our city departments come up to present the budget. They're going to take just a few brief minutes to hit some of the highlights of their work plan for the coming year, to see if we're heading in the right direction. And if you've got suggestions and modifications to that work plan, we look forward to that conversation. You know, 2011 is going to be a milestone year. Our community will hit its 200th anniversary. MTSU is going to hit 100 years. And while this budget does certainly have some tough decisions in it, as I mentioned, I think we've put together a work plan for you that is going to talk about customer service, and it's going to talk about maintaining the city's strong financial position, which we have. And we're going to focus on public safety. So we look forward to the budget review sessions with you and talking to you more about what we hope to accomplish this year.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lyons and Mr. Crumley. Certainly, it is a well-thought-through and explicit explanation regarding this overview. And I think it's particularly helpful that we have so many community leaders and volunteer leaders and agency managers here with us today. I'm sure each of these individuals is going through their own budgets and their own organizations, trying to understand how best to live in today's economy. All of us have to really maintain the franchise that we have to be a strong, economically viable agency, and I think you certainly have taken these initial steps this year to provide us so much information as being a good start, and I do appreciate that. I think you have certainly, once again, proved your metal as city manager, and I think you've made this council look pretty smart for hiring you, for your position, for doing that. And I think in hiring Mr. Crumley, you have added to your capacity and capabilities. And I don't say that lightly, but in some ways, it's incumbent upon this council and certainly our community to make sure that we have the best, to maintain the best, and to stay economically strong, keep safe neighborhoods, and make sure that our schools are what people want for their children. So I think you have set us on a course to do that again this year. I'm sure there may be changes and exceptions to be made, but at least from my point of view, and I don't want to speak for all the council, but I think you've done a great job in starting us off, and I appreciate all of the effort and the work that you and your staff have put together to bring us this document. Now, we're going to, at this time, start going through that document little by little. And again, before I begin that, I want to open up the floor to the council members, if any of them have anything to say regarding this budget overview or what you have presented to us so far. Anyone?
I do.
Yes.
Yes. That's okay. I would like to also commend both of you for doing an excellent job. I don't know when it's time to ask a couple of questions, being the new kid on the block. I do have some concerns. One being, the last thing I personally would like to see us do is lay off. Anyone? April of last year, my home was hit in the tornado, and I just got back in my home in October. And to go home to that devastation and then go to work and get a pink slip, that is, that's very dramatic to me. I don't know when the time will be for, to ask questions about alternatives to layoffs. Do we do it when we go with the various departments, or do we do it now?
I think we'll certainly have an opportunity during all our budget review to look at individual questions and light items, if you'd like to do that, and I certainly encourage you to do that. When you look at revenues and you look at expenses, then I think you can ask whatever questions at that time, either appropriate to the department head or to Mr. Crumley or to Mr. Lyons, if that would be all right with you.
That's fine.
Okay.
I just have some concerns on that.
Sure. I understand. And we all will as we go through the document, I'm sure. It's quite a lot of information, and I think there can be a lot of questions there.
All right.
You're exactly right. All right. Any other comments or questions from the council members at this time? Any other comments or questions from the council members at this time? If not, then let's go to our human resource. I believe, or do you want to cover general fund any more than that? We'll go on to human resource.
Yes, there were questions on the revenue. One change we did make in the budget, it goes along with the additional information, is we've essentially put a revenue glossary in there for you. So for each of the revenue line items, we've provided you a description and the rate that is calculated. Hopefully, that'll be useful for the community, as they may have some questions. But the revenue picture was certainly very tough this year. And if I could, just, Mayor, we appreciate the compliments on budget. I do want to recognize the work that was done by Ms. Wright and Ms. Tucker, who worked tirelessly on this budget. This was a, very much a team effort, and our department has worked awful hard to put all this narrative together as well. So that, appreciate the compliments and want to share those with the rest of the staff.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker and Ms. Wright.
Thank you.
This is still a work in progress. You will find gaps. You will find some numbers that are in error. We will have a second edition after your actions on the budget. Any things that you see that don't appear to be correct to you, or you would like to have additions to this document, we'll take good notes now, and you can let us know at any time during the process.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Godwin, you want to talk about human resources. I believe that's the first department summary that we'd like to consider at this time. And council members, that's on page 77, begins, and then page 80. And then you also have, I believe, some salary data that is in a separate binder, if you want to consider that. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and members of City Council. Also, thank you, Ms. Harris, for pointing out being the newest kid on the block. That now takes me off the hook, as I've been here about three months. As you may know, the department name change from personnel to human resources took place recently. We feel that this provides our team with a unique opportunity to provide a level of service to city employees and their families this year. And we intend to meet the council's priorities in the following ways for the new budget year. As we do have five functional areas listed in our department, and you'll see those on page 77 of your book, we will continue to provide support to all city departments with respect to the recruitment of new employees, which includes, of course, advertising, pre-employment, drug and alcohol testing, also new hire and benefits orientation. And as you know, we also administer the city general fund payroll. As healthcare costs continue to escalate and the compliance with the newly passed healthcare reform laws becomes more prevalent, we are charged with a need for watching those costs and to maximize both our current benefit plans for a sustainable financial future, as well as to take some good advantage of some new subsidies that have become available with the new healthcare reform laws. And as was previously mentioned, the defined benefit contribution plan launch is on track to be launched on July the 1st at this point in time. Importantly, we do intend to lead the city's efforts on delivering a customer service training program for city employees that will provide important skills for our employees as we see them in the human resources department. Our customers are the employees of the city, so they really are, in effect, two different types of customers, both internal and external. I don't think our benchmarking measures were available at press time in this document, but I would point out some important statistics. We do, on an annual basis, accept approximately 4,000 applications for employment with the city each year, with roughly 35 full-time job openings and approximately 65 part-time openings, excluding parks and recreation. So you can see we're a very popular place for applicants in the city to put in a job application. With the payrolls that we mentioned, we generate approximately $37 million in payrolls per year on four cycles, which works out to about 80 payrolls per year. Our proposed budget includes funding for nine human resources staff positions, which is not a change from the previous two fiscal years. You'll note that our proposed personnel costs do include the funding of a retiree who's running out of benefits, and of course, an increase in healthcare workers' compensation costs. A couple of other line items that I would note in the proposed budget include customer service training costs and the outplacement costs associated with the potential placement assistance for impacted employees, should there be a reduction in the city's workforce. As you may know, the city is self-funded with respect to its, the administration of health and dental benefits. With that, our claims and the utilization of our benefits drives our premium increases each year to a large degree. Our renewals for next year were requested with similar structure design, that is, an 80 percent funding by the city, 20 percent funding by the employee, so that share would be maintained in the proposal for both our medical and dental providers. After our initial proposals were returned, with approximate premium increases of over 20 percent, we reviewed claims and removed the amounts for large claims. Our final increased proposals for all coverage is approximately 11 percent higher than last fiscal year. To reference that, in the previous fiscal year, it was an increase of 8 percent in fiscal year '09. To continue, Blue Cross Blue Shield did inform the city that the Blue RX Fully Insured Medicare Part D Prescription Drug Plan would be eliminated for retirees as of August the 31st of this year. We began looking at options back in the winter, when Ms. Mahon was the personnel director, and we reviewed some viable options. We believe that the most viable option would be to move the retirees back to the city's self-funded Medicare supplemental plan for their prescription drugs. That is, as a result of familiarity with the plan with retirees, and we did find that the Blue Advantage Meniscal Plan option was much higher in terms of prescription drug copays for our seniors and our retirees. Finally, since cost containment is even more essential with our utilization and the fact that we are self-insured, our rate increases in healthcare perform does provide the city with an opportunity to take full advantage of further subsidies. So we believe that utilizing a benefits consultant with public sector experience and one that is up to date with the healthcare reform laws is the correct approach to take. To this end, we do recommend an amount in the budget, I believe that is contained in the documents on page 206, for that service, and that amount is proposed to be $75,000. I'll be happy to take any questions at this time.
Any questions from Mr. Godwin regarding his comments or the budget for the human resource department? Mr. McFarlane.
Mr. Godwin, 11 percent. What's the total, what's the total number?
The total healthcare cost number, there are two actually, and what I'll point out is, if you have that, the document that I believe Mayor Bragg talked about, the total proposal would be $10,93,519.38, of which 80 percent cost to the city is $8,74,815.50. The employee portion of that total, $10 million, at 20 percent, is $2,8,703.88.
Mr. McFarlane, because that is such a large expense of the city, our health insurance cost, that is the reason why we want to bring in a consultant to come, essentially, take apart our health insurance coverage, study it, look, and create some transparency in terms of how our health insurance is paid. Other Tennessee cities who have brought in someone to kind of take apart their health insurance have found it to be very successful. So we think there are rebates that occur in health insurance coverage that the city needs to be able to take advantage of, and it's been a long time since this has been bid out. So we think this is one way where we can real, it's a very large expense, and in a tough time, you want to target those large expenses to make sure you're as cost-efficient as you can be. So this is, this will be one of the major initiatives this year, is to really study that hard, to see what we can do to lower those health insurance costs, not only for the city, but for our employees as well.
And our benefit pay, as far as health insurance, although premiums may be going up, but we are still continuing to cover 80 percent of the employee's entire family, correct?
Yes, sir.
So whether it's one employee or eight people in the family, we're covering 80 percent of that cost.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Ms. Harris.
And based on what you're saying, right now, for this next year, our employees are being asked to pay more on their health insurance, correct?
Yes.
What percentage more are they getting asked, based on your new claim?
That is correct. Approximately 11 percent for the total package.
Ms. Harris, it ranges on a monthly basis, the employee's share. It ranges, an individual on United Healthcare, the increase per month would be $7.15 per month. And on the high side, for those with Blue Cross Blue Shield with family coverage, the increase to them on a monthly basis would be $38.44. So between $7 and $38 is the range of the increased cost to the employee.
Wow. Thank you.
And we still have a cafeteria plan, that those dollars can be before federal income tax.
Yes, sir.
So you're getting a true dollar-for-dollar payment from that.
Mr. Lyons, what's the lifetime of this study? Is it one year, or will it, the things that we learn from this go into the next and the next year, into this?
Well, I think part of what, the consultant that I'm familiar with, and I think there's others that do this, you know, part of their conversation with the city is going to be, you know, what is it that you can afford for your health insurance costs, and creating a package that meets that budget. Conversely, if we want to continue with the same benefit package, they can look to find some cost efficiencies in it. So we've got a variety of options. Our goal would be to have this study done in time for next year's budget. So by the time we bring budget to you next year, we would have already studied it, did it out, and brought to you a new proposal, hopefully with fewer dollars.
And there are rebates and other savings that we could take advantage of in this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Godwin. We'll go on to our next item at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg.
Our next item is, in our budget overview, is to consider outside agency requests, and those are on pages 136 and 138 of your document. And if you are here representing an outside agency today, we would like to recognize you and ask you to stand at this time. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here, and we appreciate all you do in our community, and we hope we will be able to at least meet part of the needs of your organization through this budget document. On our outside agencies, if you will look, there is a department summary. Mr. Lyons, would you like to make any comments regarding these outside agencies, or shall I go through each one of them, as we have done before?
I didn't have any further comments. Again, Mayor, with the difficult budget situation, you'll see most of the budgets that have been funded are at the level that you approved last year.
All right. So let us look first at the first request we have, I think is from our Rutherford County Health Department for $11,000, and that was what was budgeted last year, and that's their request this year. Any questions regarding the Health Department? Tennessee Rehabilitation Center, $42,000 has been requested, and that was what was budgeted last year. Questions regarding the Tennessee Rehabilitation Center? Land Ball Library, $705,333, and that is what is budgeted and requested. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Lyons, what is the portion of, I think, other agencies, Rutherford County, what do they, what do they do for the library as well? Do you have those figures from last, I know you can't tell me for this year, but...
Sure. I believe the funding split between the city and county was maintained, as I understand that the county funded their historically traditional percentage, and we've included our historically...
Do you recall what that was? What those numbers were?
What the county portion was?
Yeah.
And then Smyrna also, and I believe Eagleville also. The Vern furnishes their own library.
It's okay. You can give, you can...
Well, the county, looks like they're a little over $1 million, and our shares, $700,000.
So Rutherford County puts in...
45, 45.
And then, you're not talking about Smyrna, but just Rutherford County, right?
Yes, sir.
We do fund 100 percent of the library at Patterson.
Correct. Right. I swear that.
Other questions regarding Land Ball Library?
Mr. Bradshaw, they requested from the county $822,052 from Smyrna, $217,945, as well as additional money from the county for the Smyrna library. Of course, Eagleville funds their library with the county, and we fund ours with just a little bit, looks like some other funds come in for donations. So in total, Murphysboro, $705,333, Smyrna, $217,945, Eagleville, $14,141, and Rutherford County, total for all libraries is $1,080,277.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is the Rutherford County Animal Services, the Pet Adoption and Welfare Service, PAWS, and they have requested $71,000, and we have budgeted $65,000, was what they received last year. Any questions regarding animal services? Vice Mayor.
Mr. Lyons, I know we created a form when we looked at doing this some time ago, and they dedicated, I think, a certain amount of employees to Murphysboro. Is that still the way that works?
I believe so.
They were, at one time, these employees were on the city of Murphysboro's payroll, and we switched it over to Rutherford County and made donations to their fund, but they dedicated a certain amount of employees to us. I think that's the way that works, if my memory serves me correctly.
I know I recently had a, you know, cause to speak to Ms. Hill from PAWS, and she was very responsive in the situation that was in front of us.
You have a Chamber of Commerce line item. First line item is economic development, $97,250, and that's the amount requested, and that's what's budgeted, and that was what was received last year. Any questions regarding economic development for our Chamber of Commerce? I might add, many cities have their own economic development department, and we have, I believe, joined with all the other municipalities and our county government in funding this particular portion for our economic development actions altogether. And I think that's a, has been a very profitable way to do that, and certainly, I think we see in other counties where there's competition between their cities, our chamber has been able to work with all of our cities and our county in trying to make that a successful economic development opportunity for each of us, as each of our cities is different. Any questions regarding the economic development portion? If not, you have the Murphysboro Economic Development, which is a $45,000 request, and $22,500 has been budgeted. Could you give us an explanation for that?
Yes, sir. The chamber does an outstanding job in their economic development program. The recommended adjustment in the amount this year, they did have one staff member to leave, and that position's been left vacant. So with the reduced staffing levels, we were able to reduce this contribution to the chamber without impacting their ability to provide the service.
All right. Then we've made a commitment to destination Rutherford of $125,000, and we've budgeted $62,500, which is half, again, of what we had budgeted before.
Final payment.
Well, that's...
Final payment.
That's the last payment for...
Final payment. We had one more to go. This fully commits our obligation, so that was the balance remaining, and that's what's budgeted.
All right. And then 30 percent of the hotel motel tax, which we receive in the city, goes to tourism, and that amount is $225,600, and that's requested and budgeted, and I'm assuming that's an anticipated figure. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any questions regarding those economic development, Destination Rutherford or tourism dollars, and where they go? All right, next is the Center for the Arts. And twenty-five thousand dollars has been requested and budgeted, as has been in previous years. Center for the Arts, any questions regarding that outside agency request? Uncle Dave Makin' Days, five thousand dollars, requested and budgeted. Any questions regarding Uncle Dave Makin' Days? The Discovery Center requested thirty-five thousand dollars, and twenty thousand dollars has been budgeted, as has been practiced in previous years. Any questions regarding the Discovery Center? Our Main Street Organization has requested thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and that is what's been budgeted, as has been previous years. Thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for Main Street. Any questions regarding Main Street? Our Murfreesboro Youth Orchestra, seventy-five hundred dollars has been requested, and fifteen thousand dollars... I'm sorry, fifteen thousand has been... Okay, let me go back. Seventy-five hundred dollars has been requested and budgeted. Murfreesboro Youth Orchestra, any questions? If not, Oakland's Association has asked for and been budgeted for fifteen thousand dollars. Bradley Academy has requested eighty-five hundred dollars, been budgeted for seventy-five hundred dollars. Any questions regarding Bradley Academy or Oakland Association? Our Murfreesboro Symphony Orchestra has asked for twenty-five thousand dollars and has received a budget request of ten thousand dollars. Any questions regarding our Murfreesboro Symphony Orchestra? Special Olympics Area Sixteen, twenty-five hundred dollars has been requested and budgeted. Two thousand dollars for our Special Olympics Area Sixteen, two thousand dollars. Thank you. International Folkloric Society has requested twenty-five hundred dollars and been budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars. Tennessee Valley Winds has requested two thousand dollars, and there's been no monies budgeted this year and none in previous years, but they have a request for two thousand dollars. Tennessee Valley Winds. Any questions regarding Tennessee Valley Winds? Crime Stoppers has asked for five thousand dollars and been budgeted five thousand dollars. Primary Care &amp; Hope Clinic has requested ten thousand dollars and been budgeted ten thousand dollars. The Exchange Club Family Center has requested nine thousand dollars and been budgeted six thousand dollars. Rutherford County's Rescue Squad has requested ten thousand dollars and been budgeted ten thousand dollars. They previously received fifteen thousand dollars. Is there a reason that was lowered, or do we still receive the services of the Rescue Squad?
Mayor, I know there were some questions last year during budget about the services and the number of runs that they do make inside our city limits. Obviously, with the expansion of services in our fire department, our fire department is now handling many of these situations. However, the Rescue Squad was asked to provide some documentation about the runs that they do make inside the city limits. Joe Pennington, who is the Director-in-Chief of the Rutherford County Rescue Squad, did send you a letter indicating they are still making some runs on a backup basis when our fire department units are occupied and responding to another call. So we did have a slight adjustment in the amount here.
Mr. Gilli.
Mayor, Mr. Lyons, I really would like to see all of that money, instead of going to the Rescue Squad, be budgeted back into our own fire department. If we need to come up with some sort of reciprocal agreement with that agency, as we do sometimes with other municipalities about backups for each other, that's fine. But now that we have our own extrication units and first responders, I really think all that money belongs to our own fire department.
Mayor, I got a quick question.
Mr. McFarland.
Mr. Lyons, my question is, and I know we helped Smyrna and Laverne, and we will be reimbursed through those areas through FEMA, but, you know, if we go to the county for a swift water rescue, or they call for our help, or do we... I mean, that's something we do as a good neighbor, correct?
Yes, sir. Unless there's an emergency declaration like the flood, like the tornado where FEMA's involved, the good neighbor assistance, we do not charge, and we've not been charged. When the FEMA declaration occurs, then typically is a reimbursement.
I would tend to agree with Mr. Gilli that, you know, we could use that money for training or for different areas that we can better assist our, you know, our fire department.
All right. Any other questions or discussion regarding the Rutherford County Rescue Squad?
Mayor, one quick question procedurally. One of the things that we're going to do with budget review this year is you all suggest changes to us. We weren't asking for a vote on the spot, but we're going to be taking notes and providing you documentation in your next budget review session and a third one, if we have one, so that you could see that entire list and then vote on those amendments all at one time. So we're going to be providing you documentation about what changes from what we've handed to you in terms of what you're going to ultimately adopt. But I'm going to make a note that that is a suggested change, if that's the consensus.
All right. Our Domestic Violence Program has requested ten thousand dollars, and that's what's been budgeted. Any questions, comments regarding domestic violence? Mid Cumberland Agency dues of seventy-five hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents have been requested, and we have not budgeted that. Meals on Wheels for Mid Cumberland, eight thousand dollars has been requested, and that's what we've budgeted, and twenty-five hundred dollars for their Homemaker Program has been requested, and we have not budgeted anything. Any questions regarding Mid Cumberland? Vice Mayor.
Is the... I want you to point out, Mr. Lyons, maybe if they're first-time requests on here. If they are, I thought we, at one time in the past, we had limits on first-time requests.
We do, but this one was not recommended to be funded since it was not funded last year.
Okay. We're going to go through here. Absolutely. I think there's others who may be on this list.
I think, believe, the first year, they could request twenty-five hundred dollars. It was our first time. That was a policy established by the council a number of years ago.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everyone remembers that, so that's...
If they were going to have a recurring request. So if it was a one-time request, it wasn't... I think that was a separate instance. We'll see that further down the list.
I don't recall that, but that's... That may be the facts.
And it is on the application that it does say twenty-five hundred is the limit.
Okay.
Leadership Rutherford, fifteen hundred dollars. That's what's been budgeted. Court-appointed special advocate of Rutherford County has been requested five thousand dollars, and that's what's been budgeted. Any questions regarding CASA or Leadership Rutherford? The Pregnancy Support Center has asked for thirty-five hundred dollars, and that's been budgeted. The Dr. Martin Luther King Scholarship Fund has requested two thousand dollars, and that has been budgeted. The Rutherford County Child Advocacy Center has two line items. One is a six thousand dollar request, and we've budgeted five thousand dollars, and they utilize an old fire hall on Old Sanson Lake Boulevard, and we pay the utilities, which we expect to be somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve thousand four hundred dollars, and that's been budgeted. Any questions regarding the Child Advocacy Center? The Boys and Girls Club has asked for twelve thousand five hundred dollars, and they have been budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars. Any questions regarding Boys and Girls Club? Special Kids has requested twenty-five thousand dollars, and we have budgeted ten thousand dollars. Second Harvest Food Bank has requested two thousand dollars, and we have budgeted two thousand dollars. The Sexual Assault Services Program has asked for twenty-five hundred dollars, and that's what's been budgeted. Any questions regarding any of those programs? Generation for Creation has requested three thousand dollars and been budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars. The Rutherford County Adult Activity Center has requested five thousand dollars and been budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars. Read to Succeed has requested five thousand dollars and been budgeted four thousand dollars. And the Jesse C. Beasley Animal Humane Center has been requested three thousand and budgeted two thousand. Then we have these further requests, but no budget has been made. Twenty-five hundred dollars from the Family and Community Education Services Incorporated. Twenty-five hundred dollars from Big Brothers and Big Sisters. Civil Air Patrol of the U.S. Air Force Auxiliary has requested twenty-five hundred dollars. Greenhouse Ministries has requested twenty-five hundred dollars. City Schools Foundation has requested twenty-five hundred dollars. The Tennessee Society of the Sons of the American Revolution has requested fifteen thousand dollars. And Youth Empowerment Through the Arts and Humanities, twenty-five hundred dollars has been requested. Any questions regarding any of those requests which have not been budgeted? Or any comments regarding those requests as to whether you would prefer to budget them or not?
Mayor, line forty-eight, the Sons of the American Revolution, is that the cemetery project that someone may have been contacted about and get some further explanation about that request?
Yes, sir. I'm sure Mr. Murphy is here.
He is here. On the second row. Mr. Murphy, if you would mention the Sons of the American Revolution, what your project is?
This project is a request by the Tennessee Sons of the American Revolution to restore the grave of Colonel Hardy Murphy, who Murfreesboro is named for. We have raised thirteen thousand dollars, and it's a request to get some additional money. It's not going to be a continuing request. Whatever we get, we'll spend to restore, and we won't be back. The Colonel Hardy was buried... Eighteen oh nine, so you can imagine the condition of his burial place. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any comments regarding these requests?
Mayor, as we go through the budget process over the next few weeks, any of these, we look back and forth, we've got the ability to bring up potentially either increases, decreases, or additions of organizations that haven't received in the past and so forth as we go along. Is that correct in how we're going to handle that? Okay.
All right, any other questions regarding these requests for funding from outside agencies?
How many of these agencies are brand-new?
I don't believe any... There was no new agency added this year. I do not believe.
Not in the budget, but the ones at the bottom. Some of these have requested before, and there are some that have never requested before at the very bottom.
And they're not new agencies?
Just new requests.
I don't think they're just new requests.
Seventy-three requests.
Right.
Now, technically, I think perhaps at line item forty-nine, it may be the newest of all of those. I don't think it's been existence a full year yet, perhaps, or just over a year. Is that right?
I'm not sure.
Well, you know, I can... When we're talking about laying off employees, in all due respect, I have a hard time with adding any new funding for anything. That's just me. I may be wrong, but that's where I am. And those outside agencies that are getting funding, you know, the county's cut you off a long time ago. So, you know, I'm real diligent about that. The employees that work for the city of Murfreesboro are my folks. And when we're talking about laying off folks, I have a hard time dealing with adding any other outside agencies or any outside monies. That's where I am. I'm sorry.
I think these are excellent agencies, all of them. And here again, being new on the block, I want to look at the entire picture. I personally don't want to see us cut any agencies. I don't want to see us cut any employees. So I want to sit back and look at the entire picture. I want to get a gist of the whole picture, because just looking at these agencies, I think they're all very much needed and excellent agencies. So I'd like to see the whole picture. Definitely, I just want to look at the whole picture and see where we can come up with some monies to help city employees. Let's just see where we can come up with some monies. I don't want to see any cuts anywhere.
Mr. McFarland.
Mayor, I would say to all the outside agencies who are out there that you probably all have made cuts to employees, and you've made cuts to the services that you're providing. I know several of the outside agencies that are out there have all had to make the tough choices of laying people off and not extending or providing services to our community. And the one thing that I would stress to the council that, you know, these outside agencies provide a service that if they don't provide it, then the community is going to look to the city government to provide a lot of these services. And as, you know, we've made the decision as a council to partner with a lot of these outside organizations that provide a beneficial service, and it allows us to not have to get into the... Some of the businesses that these people do. I think they're experts in these organizations, and the more that we can help make it through this tough time that we're all going through, the more beneficial it will be to the community as a whole. And I think that goes... My question was going to be in economic development. Are we doing everything that we need to do to support the Chamber and their staff in getting our unemployment rate down and recruiting the businesses that we need to get into Murfreesboro?
Yep, I think so. I think that, you know, the city of Murfreesboro and the Chamber have enjoyed an outstanding working relationship. We're continuing, working together on projects, and I can't say enough good things about the hard work that Mr. O'Toole, Ms. Sears do on behalf of the city. So we are absolutely partners when it comes to that. I'm not aware of anything they've needed that we hadn't worked together on.
Well, you know, Rob James, I hate to throw out names, but he's a mentor of mine, and he told me one time, you got to spend money to make money. And I didn't understand it at that time, what I do now. You have to spend money to make money. That's what economic development is all about. And some people don't understand... And some people don't understand that, but I do. So, and being in my business, Middleton's Electric and what we do every day, you've got to understand, you've got to spend money to make money. And that's just the way it is.
Well, I think you can see our economic development efforts have worked and certainly the results from Destination Rutherford have been significant in our county and certainly in our city. And I think we would be in a much more difficult situation today had we not had the last eight years of Destination Rutherford and the partnership that we've had with our Chamber on Economic Development. I look at the Avenue and the hospital and our schools and what we have to offer, new employers as well as existing businesses. I think one of the reasons people continue to invest in Murphysboro is they find it a great environment to build a company and our existing businesses are the ones that make a huge difference. So, I think those are dollars well spent also. Other questions or comments on outside agency requests? If not, you are all excused if you need to leave. I'm sure you may have other things to do. We would love for you to continue to stay with us if you wish, but you are free to go. And speaking of cemeteries, Mr. Murphy, we'll talk about Evergreen Cemetery now. Council members have before them the tentative budget for the Evergreen Cemetery, which is a separate operating agency, not in one of our funds, but a separate operating entity. And you have their tentative budget before you as well as their salary schedule on a two-page document that's been furnished to you. Their total revenues are expected to be $472,275 and that matches what they expect their expenditures to be. Are there any questions regarding the Evergreen Cemetery tentative budget 2010-2011 that's been provided to you?
Are there any increases, Mayor, to salaries or any of that?
Are there any salary increases? I think we have J.R. Roberts, who is the Cemetery Commission Chair, who is here. Mr. Roberts, is that correct? There are no salary increases? I'd like to commend Mr. Roberts for his diligence serving as the Chair of that Cemetery Board Commission. They have a huge facility and he has undertaken in the last several years to revitalize and ask for some things that no one else has, and I appreciate his efforts in doing that. And he wants to make it safer and he wants to make it more accessible and I certainly appreciate that. And I know the families who have loved ones there are appreciative of your efforts too. And I hope you will convey that to your board. Any questions regarding Evergreen Cemetery? If not, we'll go to the Debt Service Fund at this time, Mr. Lyons.
Mr. Crumley's going to take that one.
Murphysboro is unlike many cities in that we budget our debt service for a variety of things outside the general fund in one category. In this debt service budget, not only is the roads and streets and the equipment that the general fund uses, parks, but we also find the city schools and the buildings that we have constructed most recently for the school system. And the municipal airport is also included in this. We've looked very hard this year at the Debt Service Fund and in conjunction with Ms. Wright in particular, have looked at a change in our budgeting method for our variable rate debt. If you remember, the fixed rate financing that the city did in 2009 removed about a third of our exposure to the variable rate debt. We've been the beneficiary of extremely low interest rates now for an excess of 18 months. The actual rate of interest that the city has paid on that variable rate debt is somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.2%. So, our assumption on the variable rate debt for the 2010-2011 fiscal year has been moved down from 4.5% to 2.5%. At the same time, I think the city manager is prepared to make a recommendation to you for a specific designation of part of the fund balance as an interest rate fluctuation reserve that would take part of that risk away from us of making a lower assumption on that variable rate debt. The total debt service this year is $22.659 million. It is 23% of your general fund budget. That is a very significant portion of our general fund and is higher than many cities that we get compared to. However, we stepped back and looked at 10 cities that compare very, with Murphysboro in terms of the growth rates in the last 10 years, 10 very fast-growing cities. Our amount of debt in the general fund matches very well with those other communities that have experienced very rapid growth. Our rapid growth has dictated the need to build schools, to build roads, to build parks. And that is why you see the debt service at that 23% level. For all funds, $28.9 million in debt service, which is 17.5% of your grand total budget of all funds. Again, we think that Murphysboro does things that mitigate having that high percentage of debt. We're repaying our debt on a 15-year schedule. In a 10-year period of time, 2/3 of the debt of Murphysboro will be completely retired. We're going into a slower growth period. The demand on new debt, we think, will be slower. However, we do propose in this budget, an additional $47.5 million of debt. A lot of these projects are carryovers from things that were implemented before the economic downturn. There are some new projects proposed for roads and for parks. Again, we've included those numbers into these equations. If you have questions, we'll be glad to try to answer them.
You've raised the general obligation debt from 45 to 47.
I'm sorry, if we've got 45 in here, that is the correct number.
45 on page 145.
Mayor, that'll be part of the capital improvement plan that will be coming to you probably in the next 60 days of the list of projects. You'll still have your opportunity to review that list, but we did budget the borrowing costs and the issuance, the interest cost for that debt, should you agree to issue that. And I think Mr. Crumley had touched on this, you know, part of our debt service payment includes what we fund for city schools. The council has provided $4.8 million for city school operations. But what isn't as clear and doesn't show up, and we've included it in this year's figures for you, is that in the upcoming budget, there is $3.9 million of the debt service number that Mr. Crumley just spoke to. 3.9 million of that is school-related. So, that is a very significant amount. So, in terms of how the city supports our city school system, it's really the 4.8 million plus the 3.9 million for our total contribution to support education in the community, which is outstanding.
And that's a key issue, what you just brought up, that some folks in the school system don't understand. It's not just what you fund for the general fund for the school system, it's also debt service. And sometimes, they don't get it.
That makes city schools, when you combine those two figures, it makes it, I think, the fourth largest expense of the city is education.
But I think there are a couple of things you also have to look at. When you look at that money that we're funding into education, you also have to look at, you know, for instance, with Pittard Elementary, we built, you know, a $5 million road, a five-lane road to help ease traffic for people to get in and out of school. We widened Pitts Lane around Pittard. We built St. Andrews Drive. We did improvements to Highway 96 to Caseon Lane. So, you know, I think it's easy to say that we've just funded money towards operating and towards sticks and bricks, but you also have to look at all the other things in the surrounding community. You know, you look at the Segal Complex and also put on top of that, the parks area that we've put out close to those schools. So, I mean, would you say if we include all of that, that number would be probably higher than that $9 million contributed a year?
He's right. It's the fourth largest budget of, when you put the two together, that the city has. Debt service, police, fire, education. Parks and Rec is after that.
I would say to you, the budget is built on the new issue, the new $45 million issue being a fixed rate issue at 3 and 3/4% interest rate. That is not our recommendation to you at this point in time that we're going to come forward with a fixed rate issue. It's kind of the largest number, I guess, we could have set into the budget for the $45 million in debt that we need to go forward with. So, as we get closer to the time of issuance, the evaluation of variable rates versus fixed rates will be made, the recommendation will be forward.
Mr. Young?
If, in our capital outlay that we'll see shortly, if some of those projects are postponed for a year or two, and we'll have that opportunity to do that, would that increase our cash? It would reduce the amount that you borrowed, so it would reduce the amount you pay, so it should have a little more revenue for this budget?
Yes, sir.
Now, how do we pull those two things together? I guess what I'm asking is, how, if we want to postpone Road A, how much would it save us for a part of this year's budget if we postponed it for a year?
A number of capital improvement projects have already been deferred. If you, I don't think we've got a copy of last year's CIP with us in here, but a number of those projects that were scheduled for this year have already been deferred. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, and I think the manager may have flipped over to it. Some of these projects you've already committed to, we've just got to think.
Some of them are committed and we have to finish follow-up.
We've done refunding resolutions for those at the time the project was approved. Mr. Young, if you look on the detail for the Debt Service Fund, you'll see the 2010--
What page?
Page 146.
All right. I'm here.
Okay. You'll see about 3/4 of the way down on the page, you'll see Interest on Bonds, 2010 Bond Issue, $55 million. $1.4 million has been budgeted. That is what we've budgeted for the next bond issue. There isn't a principal payment, so adjustments to individual projects will affect that one number. So, there's not--
That $55--
But you know where I'm going.
Yes, sir. And-- You'll incrementally affect the $1.4 million on that line item.
And that $55 million hasn't, we haven't updated that. You can see the capital projects that have already been deferred, the difference between the $55 million on this sheet and the $45 million we've talked about.
We corrected the interest, we just missed that description, changed it to 45.
Yeah, that line item should say 45 million. You'll be able to, you potentially could save some, Mr. Young, but not, it won't be a huge dollar savings this year. Principal and interest the following year, yes, it will start to impact that, but on this year's budget, you'll have some impact, but not a huge one.
But if you defer your projects, they become more expensive when they are funded, so it's two-edged sword.
We're in a very good bidding cycle right now.
What's your opinion, if we proceed with this bond issuance, and we think that 2/3 of the debt will be retired, I think that's right, 2/3 of the debt will be retired over the next 10 years, so by, you know, 2020, that our, you know, our number will look much, much, much lower. What's your anticipation moving forward past this bond issuance? Do you see it being as aggressive as it's been over the last 10 years?
No, sir. No, sir. With the slowdown in the growth, that is causing us to slow down some of the capital projects because the growth isn't there. You know, we typically have been issuing bonds or borrowing from the TML Bond Fund on an annual basis. We held off last year, again, kind of tightening the belt, holding off on some things. We're at the point now where we're going to need to go borrow, but we've tried to cut back the number of projects. And I think when you look over the next five years, and that's what, when I bring you the CIP, it'll be the next five years' worth of projects, with year one being what we would borrow for and laying the groundwork for the next four years, you're going to see a smaller, smaller amount of money than we've seen, you know, in the early 2000s.
And you said that we finance our projects over 15 years, and we're talking about a school that may be in operation for 30, 35, 40 years, and roads that will be in, for 50 years. How do other municipalities do that? What are they?
The average in Tennessee is probably 20-year debt, although there are many communities that finance their long-term projects like roads and schools on 30 years. That's one of the things that we'll discuss in the financial policies that'll be coming to you in the next two to four weeks. The option to change our policy from 15-year debt to longer debt is certainly available to you. It provides short-term savings and long-term, very, very expensive interest increases. But it's an option that's available that we need to discuss at that time. The course of 15-year debt is a very, very conservative course. While the city was growing so rapidly, the need was there. It has made it a very large piece of our annual operating budget, but as growth has slowed down, the amount of borrowing slows down, it will provide enormous interest cost
And the converse of that unfortunately is that as the businesses have slowed down their spending, then government slows down their spending and the economies don't improve very well. So, I mean, I think that's one of the things that's kept this country going in the last 12 months, has been government spending. And as governments slow down because their infrastructure projects are not needed as much anymore, we're going to continue to see these tight budgets and these economic challenges that we're learning to live with now. And Ms. Harris, I don't want to cut anybody's budget either, but our budget's been cut, so when we don't have dollars, we can't spend dollars. And that's been, I think, what our city staff has been struggling with for the last 18 months, frankly. And we got through one year without doing what we could have done last year with some layoffs and further cuts. And I think this year and next year, it's just going to catch up with us. So, I'm as willing as you are not to cut anything, but the problem is, we've been cut, and that's why we're cutting.
Well, you know, people want us to run government like we would run our business or like a small business would run it, but when small businesses are, when their revenues and their business drops, they have to make the appropriate adjustments.
At the right size.
And I think we're no different from those people who we serve in our small business communities.
The lines you mentioned, or Mr. Crumley, I guess, mentioned that you were going to have a separate line item for a reserve. That's not shown on this proposed budget sheet on 142.
No, sir, but that is going to be a tool that we want to share with you in the financial policies. You haven't seen those yet. We've gotten feedback from the city's financial advisor. A part of that is being more intentional about our fund balance, that in the past, we budgeted it 4% and the interest rates have been nowhere near that. So, what we've tried to do is budget more realistically with a healthy cushion from what we're currently experiencing. But should interest rates spike and spike significantly, we want to be able to assign and cover up that extra expense through our fund balance. So, it's a way of not budgeting the money and making some tough choices. It's freed up some cash for this year's budget, but again, I want to emphasize, we're budgeting our interest costs significantly higher than what we're experiencing. In past years, we've gone even higher with our interest costs. If we saw a significant spike and a prolonged spike, I would be coming back to you to say, I remember during budget review when I said, you know, we budgeted it 2.5% and had been at 1.2%, well, it's at 6%. And if, you know, I don't expect that to happen, but if it did, I would come back to you and say we've assigned some fund balance for that. I don't expect it to happen, I don't expect us to tap fund balance for that purpose. But that is just for an unforeseen contingency.
But you do have from debt service fund balance, a $3 million--
Yes, sir.
--budgeted item, which you had last year, did not use, is that correct?
Correct.
And you're going to use it again--
Yes, sir.
--and maybe not use it?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Lyons, over the last two years, between the last two budgets, from reading over this, it looks like that last year, we were $4 million, 4.8 million less than what we had budgeted to spend, and that was due to cuts in rights, not necessarily rightsizing employees, but rightsizing our expenditures. And then this year, we're looking to come in another $5 million or so. So, really, over the last two years, we've almost saved $10 million. So really, over the last two years, we, we've almost saved ten million dollars in hiring and other savings measures. Is that--
And a large part of that goes back to that interest expense that we budgeted at four percent and only realized a one percent. Large part of those savings had to do with, with that savings in interest cost. We faced the last two Septembers, the city manager, have, Mr. Haley, myself, last September, have had to say to staff, our revenues already were coming in significantly lower, time to tighten the belt. So some of those savings were the department heads making the adjustments they needed to do to live within our means, and you'll look at, overall, on the expenditure budget, we'll be coming in, you know, significantly less than what you authorized last year. That's been staff's track record. Just because you authorize a spending level doesn't mean we run out and try to spend it. We need to make good use of the taxpayer money, and we've had a good track record of bringing our budget, coming in within budget.
So is that what we're talking about, the rainy day fund? Are we talking about, is that the name we're giving it?
No, rainy day fund would not be accurate, Ms. Harris.
Or the reserve fund?
Our fund balance.
Fund balance, okay.
Yes, we'll speak more about that later on in budget discussions.
Okay.
All right, turning to Parks and Recreation Fund, I think Mr. Goodwin is here. That's on pages one fifty to one fifty-seven. And you also have their salaries in your supplemental data. Mr. Goodwin, welcome. You have some remarks you'd like to make.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. One of the things that I want to compliment Mr. Cronin and Mr. Lyons on is this budget document. I think that it speaks very well to what the city is trying to do. I know in the past, we've looked at numbers, and now we're looking at, excuse me, programs, and we're looking at initiatives that we're trying to achieve for our citizens. Let me just mention a couple of things under the implementation of the council priorities, and they are listed in this document, but I want to add a couple of things to that. Under Safe and Livable Neighborhoods, last year, we published our first annual report. And in that annual report, it had two-hundred-and-twenty-six programs that we offered to the public, excuse me, and thirty special events. In addition, we had seventy agreements with different agencies and partners that offered expansion of recreational opportunities, everything from athletics to culturally oriented activities and events. And that would be things like the Murfreesboro Baseball Association, the Optimists, those kind of people that really make a difference with their hip and their volunteerism, that goes a long way in making Murfreesboro what it is. On an average, we have approximately ten to fifteen thousand people in our parks every day, and that is a significant number. We maintain over eleven-hundred-and-fourteen acres of parkland in our city, and we have twenty-six different recreational sites citywide. In our two main recreational centers, Patterson and Sportscom, we log over two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand user visits annually. Our fees and charges that we offer to our public, we think is very affordable, and we try to keep those at an affordable rate. One of the other things that we do, because we want everyone to be able to participate in our programs, is we offer financial assistance to our residents, and we tie that to the free and reduced lunch program. And mayor and council, if you equate that to dollars, now, we do not collect dollars for that, but if you look at what we do, we give the equivalent of what is a premium pass to people that qualify. If you equate that to dollars, last year in 2009, we gave out over three-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars worth of financial assistance to our residents, and I think that's very significant. Under the Strong and Sustainable Financial Economic Health, we work very closely with our Chamber of Commerce to attract large athletic events such as Spring Flame. And of course, you know, we've just gotten the President's Cup and then been awarded the Region Three Soccer Tournament, which will be in 2011. Those two soccer tournaments alone will generate over ten million dollars in economic impact. And that doesn't include other tournaments. We have the Tennessee Baseball Association Tournament, which is a large tournament, estimated over three-million-dollar impact. And then the Tennessee State Soccer Association has moved their championships to Murfreesboro. We have a host of softball tournaments and other things, and we feel like we do contribute greatly to the economic impact of our city. One of the other things I want to mention is the local stimulus that I think our department and the outside agencies that we deal with stimulate. And sometimes you don't think about that, you think about bringing in the tournaments and those kind of things from, because you've got hotel and motel and so forth. But my grandson, I want to mention that, playing six-year-old tee ball this year, he spent about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars on equipment. Well, I'm happy to report that we have eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty other athletes in Murfreesboro that hopefully is spending an equivalent of that. We just recently had a focus group of folks that sat down, and I had one lady that said she felt like a taxi cab service for Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Department, going from activity to activity. So we are moving people in the community, we are stimulating the local business with them buying equipment and those kind of things, so we think that's important. The other thing I want to mention is, I do, every time I have an opportunity with my staff, tell them that to shop locally with the dollars that the city council has provided us. I think that's very important. Whether we're having services to our buildings, whether we're going out and buying recreational supplies for programs and activities, I think anytime we can spend those dollars locally, that's important. The other thing that I talk to my staff about is spend their dollars here. You know, we've got all the restaurants that you could ever want to go to, so try to spend your dollars locally here. Under excellent service with the focus on customer service, our customer service in Parks and Recreation is our number-one priority. We want to make sure that all of our citizens has excellent customer service. One of the ways that we have done that is we have started a customer service satisfaction survey. It's an online survey. We conducted that last year, we got some very valuable information that told us what they would like to see in Parks and Recreation, and the direction they would like to go. We're also utilizing friends groups and focus groups, and we're looking very closely at the programs that we're producing and having postevaluations of those programs and trying to improve the quality of each and every one of those programs. To mention just a few of the goals that we have in there, just in a couple of weeks, we'll be bidding the Phase Three of our Stones from Greenway, which will extend from Salem Highway, Highway ninety-nine, about a mile toward Barfield Crescent Park. That should be completed within this calendar year. Next year, we will be bidding the Phase Four, and Phase Four will take us to Barfield Crescent Park. One of the things that we would love to be able to do this year, and there was an article in the paper just the other day, is renovate Kids Castle. I'm sure many of you remember building Kids Castle. It was a monumental task that the community undertook. Believe it or not, that facility is fifteen years old, and it's what I call a victim of its own success. It is basically worn out. And I went by there today, and the parking lot was still full, and people were still enjoying that facility, but we do need to renovate that facility. We still plan to improve our program delivery and provide the recreational facilities and services that people have come to enjoy in Murfreesboro. Just a couple of upcoming events I would like to mention to you. Spring Flame starts next week. We will have over five thousand athletes in Murfreesboro, probably another ten thousand parents and guests, so fifteen, maybe twenty thousand people additional in Murfreesboro next week, all week. Our July the Fourth Celebration will begin at, again, be at McKnight Park on July the Fourth. And the President's Cup, which is the national soccer tournament, will be July the seventh through the eleventh. When the National Chair came to Murfreesboro, we asked him, what do you think of our facility? He said, well, it's probably not as nice, nice of a setting as I saw in Hawaii, and it's probably not as big as the one I saw in Anchorage, Alaska. He says, but I can tell you got one of the finest in the nation. So, with that, our department is proposing this year to have five major divisions. Mr. Lyons mentioned the athletic division. We are maintaining seventy employees, we had seventy last year, we're maintaining seventy this year, and our budget is, if you look at the bottom line, reduced two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
I believe you, did you have the Tennessee Recreation and Parks Association meeting here this year?
Yes, sir, we are hosting the Tennessee Recreation and Parks Association Annual Conference. That will be in September, September the nineteenth through the twenty-second.
So we're not just an athletic venue, is that right?
We're not just an athletic venue, we're trying to attract many other things, many special events. Matter of fact, we're working on several new special events that would be a cultural in nature that I think you'll be very pleased with.
Great.
Mayor--
Yes?
You touched on something when we were talking about economic development, and working with the Chamber, Parks and Recreation have really landed some big fish, and this soccer tournament is huge, and I would encourage both the Chamber and the Parks and Recreation to pursue those with all your energies, because that, that brings so many dollars into this community, and we don't have to build schools and roads and things like that.
Well, we've already built them.
Well, you're right, that's right. And the parks we build are, is a good example of, of-- Quiet, we're getting there.
Yes, that's exactly right, I agree with you wholeheartedly. Any questions regarding the Parks and Recreation Fund that you have? I think you'll see the total budget this year, including a Greenway Trail Extension, is a little over eight million dollars, and we will have a match to that. Is that, are we given the property, is that what we're doing to match that eighty percent?
Mayor, I think it's, it's a good move for the Recreation Department as a member of the, of the Parks and Recreation Commission, but to move to have our athletic division, being on the ball field three days a week, it's amazing how many, how many kids and parents are out there at Sportscom and McKnight, Segal, that are active in this community, and that's something that we go back and we stress on the Parks and Recreation Commission, that not only are we, are we trying to keep Murfreesboro's quality of life high, but that the healthy activities that we can promote, just like our plan that we have for our city employees that we initiated a couple of years ago, that those, those go back to help our health insurance costs. So the more that we can keep our community active, active, the better we all are.
Mr. McFarlane, you're, you're exactly right. If you look at Tennessee ranks overall in the nation health-wise, and you look at how Murfreesboro, it's almost an anomaly, because Murfreesboro and Williamson County and a couple of other counties rank higher than most of the states in the Union. And I think it's contributed directly to getting the kids out, getting people out, getting them involved with activities and so forth, and that's our goal of, and one of the other things I'd like to mention while I've got the podium, is we're working now very closely with city schools. I know we're having breakfast meetings with the city manager and the new superintendent of schools, and we're looking at bigger and better after-school programs. We're looking at getting kids involved actively in outdoor recreational programs, things, and we're, we're going directly to the schools with those. The other thing that we're looking at is even improving our athletics within the school systems, and the Parks and Recreation will take a major role in setting those up. So as we get more and more involved in this process, we involve more and more of our children and our families that live here in Murfreesboro.
Yes, Mr. Washington.
Well, Lanning, you know, I thought that when Dennis retired, he talked a whole lot, but you talk a whole lot more.
He told me well, Mr. Washington.
I guess so. But now, you do a wonderful job, and because of Marilyn's dad and some folks that were before me, you know, there's a Patterson Center sitting over there. And I really appreciate, you know, what's going on over there, what you all have done over there, and you and I know, we sit on the hill, you know, and look back, and I couldn't see what you could see, and you saw more than I could see, and I appreciate you for that.
Yes, thank you. We are, like you say, I mean, we really get down to the nitty-gritty, and we've got people walking that's working in coalitions, door-to-door in the Patterson area, looking at the need, and we're trying to fulfill those individual needs. So we're getting very specific with our, with our targeted programs.
People don't understand, between Habitat and the Parks and Rec and the Police Department, and all those coalitions that are working over there, you know, we need to be really proactive, and I hope us as a council will continue to pay attention to those kids' needs over there, or citywide, period, really.
Right, and that's, that's one of the reasons that we're taking the approach we are, which is a citizen-driven department.
Thank you.
All right, any questions regarding the Parks and Recreation Funds? I commend you for your salaries being at near oh-seven, oh-eight levels, and your expenditures, your maintenance, your fuel costs. If anybody is getting any more money, it looks like it's the Water and Sewer Department, and we'll talk to him later.
Well, he's--
What's that?
Our utilities is one of the challenges that we have in our department.
But I can see through your fuel usage and your salaries, and you, you're doing an amazing job of maintaining those facilities and keeping them open and keeping them running, so my, my compliments to you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments regarding Parks and Recreation? If not, we'll go to the Senior Citizens Fund. I believe Ms. Burt is here. She'll give us some brief overview of your department and how much we love our senior citizens.
Our seniors have contributed greatly over the past years to Murfreesboro, and the seniors continue, they have grown and sustained Murfreesboro and continue to do so throughout the community. Under the Safe and Livable Neighborhoods, our enhancement to quality of life through prompt, efficient, and courteous services to senior adults, their families, and caregivers. Stop right there for, under caregivers, you know, we have a caregiver resource program. We realize that we have, with the boomer generation coming on, one in four boomers is a caregiver. We need to take care of our seniors, and we are seniors, and so we need to take care of them, but through this, we do have the resources to help our boomers to be efficient caregivers. And we provide educational programs that highlight safety and services of the senior center, and/or we connect them to the services throughout the community as resources that will help them. We coordinate services through the different other agencies, and we bring them to the senior center, or we will call them and make arrangements that they can have an appointment with them, and we also are able to work with our seniors and connect them with maybe programs that they're eligible for, income-qualified or whatever, that we're able to do that. Under our Strong and Sustainable Financial and Economic Health, we provide a base of support that encourages and maintains independent senior living in the community. support that encourages and maintains independent senior living in the community. We enable our seniors to continue to give to the community through volunteerism, through, and our community-minded to buy in Murfreesboro, and to receive services from the resources in Murfreesboro. We do have three things that we emphasize, especially at the senior center. One is education. That is lifelong learning. We think that, that no one should ever stop learning. Second thing would be wellness. And we emphasize fitness and wellness because that we want their years, their long years to be healthy and happy years. And also socialization. A lot of times, people will come in and see, and visit our events, and they'll see that there's a lot of laughter and happy times, great moments. And, but socialization is as important, and it's a known fact, as important as nutrition. We're right up there with that because the socialization gets the senior out of isolation, and they can meet with their friends, meet new friends at the senior center. And that, it is a proven fact that this socialization actually adds nine years to their life. And we want to make them good years. And so that's why we're here under, we're enhancing, I wrote notes and I wrote it on my page and I'm mixing them up here, but we're enhancing the lives of the seniors. We not only add years to their life, but life to their years. That's an old cliche, but it's very true. And then under excellent services with a focus on customer services, we're carrying a compassionate commitment to the provision of service to our senior adults. We provide many services that we do, we do not ask any funding for it because we provide those services for it. A lot of times, they would have to go elsewhere and pay a different amount, but we provide those services. And that's simply because the city is very gracious in funding our senior center. We also get support through the county. We also get support through other programs, agencies, and other grants. Actually, we raise with program income and donations and with the other grants and contributions that come into the senior center, about 30% of our budget is raised in addition to what is contributed through the city and county. And we're able to do that, and we're happy to do that. A few statistics I do want to share with you. This past year, we had over, we had over 353 volunteers at the senior center that put in over 14,000 hours of service. That is very significant. With our staff of 10 full-time, nine part-time, it would be difficult, almost impossible, to do all that we do. And if you just come over to the senior center and see what all we do, it will amaze you what all gets done there. But we provide many, many services. And there's a lot of times, you know, you think, well, what does this have to do with health or whatever? But because there is a method to the madness or a reason for doing these things, we are enhancing the quality of life for our seniors. And we, on our roster, we have over 5,000 seniors that participate throughout the year. And then we send out a newsletter to over 3,000, and some of those, in addition to that, we do it through the email. We have a monthly newsletter we send out to let all of our seniors know what all the programs and services that we do have. We are able to, this year, to have a net reduction in our budget of, I think it's 13,000.
Again, very similar to Parks and Rec, you've been able to operate at a level very similar to your old 708 costs, and I appreciate you doing that. And your salaries reflect that, and I think your utility costs do too. You have an excellent center. It's huge. It's much like Rover. People want it to do more. And I certainly understand that because it is a very generous service and one that, when you take advantage of it, there are lots of opportunities there. Any questions on the Senior Citizens Funds or their salary schedule? Their salary schedule is on page 61.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'm fortunate enough to represent the council on Ms. Burke's board, and I want to tell you that she is so right. There are so many positive things going on out there at the center. I'm not sure I could keep up with them. But I'm senior, and as Mr. Billy was telling me earlier, someday he'll be that old. But it really is amazing to see how much positive activity goes on out there. It's just, I'm amazed every time I go out there. So many things going on all the time, from play productions to pool tournaments to trips all around. It's just really amazing. And I don't think people are aware of what, how many positive things are going on out there.
Well, ones who participate are because they like it, they keep coming back.
I'm amazed how active you and Doug are, Mayor.
And we're going to use it all before you get there, and it won't be any left.
That's right. There'll be no social security there.
We're getting it all.
That's right.
Nice try, Vice Mayor. All right. Any other questions regarding the Senior Citizens Fund or the comments?
She does a wonderful job.
Thank you very much.
We're glad you came to us from out west.
Thank you.
Thank you. You may be seated, and let's go to our Public Golf Course Fund. I believe our Director of Golf is here, Mr. Tracy Wilkins. And the public 163 to 170 in the budget, and 51 and 52, are there salaries in your supplemental booklet? Mr. Wilkins, welcome.
Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for the opportunity.
I've been having a little trouble with my grip, and I've...
Well, you know where I work.
I'm trying to keep the cost to the taxpayers way down by spending all my money at Old Fort.
We appreciate it. Just a couple of brief points here, but the golf course, I guess the goal providing is playable condition facilities at the value that the residents have come to expect. And ours being a revenue-based department, ours is based mainly on our number of rounds that we produce. With the weather that we've had last winter, along with the economic times that we've had, it's, it has been a tough year. But things are, look like they are having an upturn, as the last couple of months have shown. One of the things that we're trying to do with trying to sustain the economic health of the facilities is one of the implementations of our new loyalty program that is new this year. It has been an exciting time. We have, we were hoping for somewhere between 300 and 500 participants in that, and just four months into it, we're already pushing the 700 mark in that. So that has been a very positive program for us. Also, with the number of players that we have, not only in our golf associations, both men, ladies, and our seniors, but the other leagues that participate, and the new implementation of a couple of additional leagues this year, play does seem to be coming back to us a little this year. Our goal obviously is to try to expand our rounds. The number of rounds that we have directly affects not only greens fees, cart fees, but also merchandise sales and concession sales. So getting the rounds number up affects a number of our line items. We are excited about the customer service programs that are coming online. One of the things that we always try to stress, being a golf course and the number of golf courses that are available in the middle Tennessee area, and all the choices that are there, that we try our best to separate ourselves from a customer service standpoint because that's the one thing that, that we can do at a high level, and that's one of the things that we stress. The golf course has been in excellent condition. We were a little bit concerned with the winter that we had, but we came out well as far as condition goes. The flooding that we did have, we were kind of built for it with our new renovation in Old Fort. It was the first time that we had water on green since that renovation, but we didn't have any significant damage. It was there only for a short period of time. Also, we were recognized this year. The Golf Shop was recognized for Middle Tennessee. Our golf professional is a merchandiser of the year for Middle Tennessee, so we were proud of that. And merchandise sales have been pretty good, even during these times, and again, depending on the number of rounds that we have. Our goals for the upcoming year, obviously increased rounds through increased interest in programs and leagues, and also participating in the PGA of Americas programs that they have promotion nationwide in Play Golf America, Free Less Than Month, and also Patriot Golf Day. Be happy to answer any questions you may have about the golf budget.
Questions? I think you can see on page 164, the number of rounds are down about 10%. The paid rounds at the VA Golf Course have risen just a bare little bit. Concession revenue is down at Old Fort and a little bit down at the VA. And the merchandise revenue is down also, but, you know, it's hard to tell based on what your costs are, and especially with one in 10, you know, with the 10% cut in the number of rounds, and that means the number of people who are out there is a little bit declined. So I hope we get that back up again.
All those numbers are directly reflected in the rounds. But April, and then April, we had an upturn in rounds for the first time in a while. May, because of the flooding, we lost the first four, four and a half days, but we're still looking at reaching and hopefully exceeding last May's numbers in that too. So things are looking pretty good right now as far as a shift in the right direction anyway.
And I would mention that, again, back to economic development, we, in February, we had our Tennessee National Guard Association meeting here, and I think we had about 80 golfers out at Old Fort. And the tee-off temperature was 28 degrees. So you have a day when you ordinarily would not have a soul out there playing golf, maybe one or two, three old-timers like me. But they had, there are 80 people out there to tee off and play in those conditions. And economic development fostered that ability, so.
One of the things we'll be experiencing this year in August will be the 25th anniversary of the golf course opening. So we hope to have a day there that we recognize that time that that's happened. But it's been 25 years just since Old Fort. And VA is not far behind it since we've been operating it. It's going on 24.
And that means you've been with us about 25 years too, is that correct?
A little over 23, yes.
23 years.
Feels like 10 and 40, depending on what day it is.
It's very good. Any questions regarding Old Fort or the expenditures or the VA or the Public Golf Course Fund? Of course, that's not part of our general fund. It's a enterprise fund that's separate. Any questions? Pearl, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to your staff too for the great job they do at our courses. All right. Solid Waste Fund, 176 to 181, and their salaries are 55 to 57. Mr. Smith, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The Solid Waste Department, due to budget constraints, we have looked at our organization from top to bottom, from our convenience center, mulching facility, to our routing, and trying to look at what cost savings that we could do, that we could find and still maintain the goals and the priorities of the City Council and Mayor, and also the service to the residents of citizens of Murfreesboro. And the proposed solid waste budget has a decrease in seven full-time employees and three part-time employees. Our brush service will be proposed to be cut weekly, from weekly to twice monthly. And even though that is a budget that will give us a decrease in our daily operation, operations budget for the Solid Waste Department, but it also maintains our goals for the proposed budget, and also in, also in the priorities that is given to us by the City Council and Mayor. Collect and dispose of the solid waste in a timely and a safe and efficient manner, and also maintain the mandated 25% diversion rate. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Smith regarding solid waste? And of course, you do our, all the yard waste, and you co-located with the Fleet Services at Florence, which...
In transit.
In transit.
And the salt bin, and also the drug police cars, and the fact team cars, and also...
Don't tell all you know. Don't tell all you know.
Well, we, let's just say we have accumulated quite a little bit down there.
I understand. You do an excellent job, and you've continued to do a lot with a little, and we appreciate that. Any question, was that, I think he's an Alabama fan, really. Anyway, questions on solid waste or their salary schedule?
Mr. Smith, I got an email about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, from one of your employees who said, in a nice way, that don't forget about us on what happened during the Good Friday tornado. And, you know, I don't think we've seen you much since then. I know you're busy directing your department, but just to say thank you to you and your staff for what y'all did and how much waste, I forget what the tonnage was, but how, how well your department performed for the weeks, the days and the weeks after tornado. What was that number, Mr. Smith, that y'all picked up?
Well, through the mulching facility itself, a little over 8,000 tons of additional yard waste came through. And that was picked up through our department and also through the contract of the city contractors. That also included about 30,000 tons of material total for the year that came into our mulching facility that we pick up. And that's part of our diversion rate that we do. When you look at what the EPA has mandated, what goes to a subtitle D landfield, we have to do a 25% reduction of what we control. And so when you couple the fact that we picked up a little over 35, 33,000 tons of garbage that we actually took to the Allied Waste Landfield, and the 30,000 tons that we actually processed mulch that we give away as free mulch, or also as boiler fuel, our diversion rate, I think, comes out to about 89%, which is, I'd say, just as good or better than just anybody in California, and they have a 50% diversion rate. So, so we are very proud of the service that we do. I mean, we have, we pick up weekly, and that's grass and limbs and brush, so.
One of the things I think we realized as we began to put the budget narrative together is the great story that can be told by all our city departments. And you started looking at some of these facts and figures, you know, the Park, the Solid Waste Department, on an annual basis, is going to drive 172,000 miles and pick up 339,000 tons of material. And that's astounding, the work that they perform. And I know, you know, one of the more difficult decisions in the budget, recognizing the hard work that this department does, you know, deals with the yard waste program. I think my household's probably very similar to what I see in neighborhoods across the city, and that is, you know, every Friday, I'm going to roll my garbage can out to the curb, and I can guarantee and count that the Solid Waste Department's going to come get it, and that service is going to be taken care of. But the number of times I bring yard waste to the curb isn't weekly. I'm not bringing yard waste out weekly. I know some people do cut their grass, and they bring grass clippings out during the summer on a weekly basis. But most households, we don't see bringing yard waste to the curb every week. That's where we saw, as we painted the picture for you on revenue, that this was an area where we can move our service back to as good as anybody else is providing, that bi-weekly service is as strong as we've seen anybody else provide. So while we might technically call this a service reduction, it's, it's still putting us at the head of the class. So again, we know this is a, you know, one of the harder parts of the budget, you know, decision-making process, but it did come with Mr. Smith analyzing his, his operation. This recommendation would also move us to a four, 10-hour-day work week in solid waste. That better utilizes their schedule. We currently pick up residential garbage on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. So the alignment and new work schedule for them actually fits better with how we normally operate anyway. So we think we're going to pick up some efficiencies that way from a scheduling standpoint.
Other questions and comments regarding solid waste?
Mayor, I just want to say that, you know, Mr. Smith's been through a lot of changes down there through the years. I know before we had the automated trucks, you know, we cut his staff... I know before we had the automated trucks, you know, we, we cut his staff. I mean, it was drastic reduction of his staff when we done that. He adapted to that real well, so did his staff. They do a great job, they work hard every day, no matter what the weather is, no matter what the circumstances are, what's being thrown their way. And I just want to tell you how much we appreciate you and your department for what you do.
Thank you, Matt. And, and right now, just for side note, I don't know if everybody knows, but we are helping with Rutherford County in their flood cleanup, and, you know, it's just part of what we do. And that service and that, what we go out, it's, it's something that's very interesting because, as I told the director of solid waste for Rutherford County, I, I know the streets in Murfreesboro, but I couldn't tell you where Shores Road and Dinky Lane was, I had to go and look up on the map. So I do know just about every street in the city, so, but know, and we try to maintain those very well.
Let me mention something too, and I think this is just an incredible statistic. No vehicle accidents in 2009.
I wish I could say the same so far in 2010, but I can't put that in there.
2009, let's just go back. Okay? Don't tell all you know.
Well, and that's true, and we were very fortunate because the year before, we actually had, we were involved in four, and we were in four rear-ended accidents. So we weren't, we technically, even in 2008, didn't have one. We were, it's amazing that a 33-foot vehicle with a light bar picking up garbage. We actually had one drive in to us from their driveway while we're picking up their can, so. So it's, we were, I just kept my fingers crossed last year, I don't know what-
Total number of residential stops per week, 41,000, and no vehicle accidents in 2009.
They go around nail boxes, cars parked on the street, basketball goals, I mean, it's, it's, it's not as easy as you think it is.
Well, there's not, probably not a month goes by that I'm not two or three letters to the editor regarding waste vehicles speeding down Old Jefferson Pike and being scared to death of them, and here's all of our vehicles, accident-free, 41,000 stops. I mean, that's, that's quite a accomplish.
A little over 1,000 per automated side loader per day on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Amazing.
And I don't know if you were involved, Joe, but I got a call from Mark O'Neill from the city of Smiling talking about Rob, about how the city of Murfreesboro is some resources to help them during the flooding down there. And that, that was amazing, that had me out of pocket for two days, because it was, it was water treatment plant underwater, you know, all that kind of good stuff, so, you know. And I know the city of Murfreesboro assisted them, and he's very appreciative of whatever Rob, you all did for them. I didn't, I was trying to get home, so, you know.
Street department helped them out that Saturday night?
Yeah.
And I want to personally thank you because I was in the neighborhood that was devastated on April the 10th when the tornado came through, and you all were most gracious to us. And not only you had a lot of passion for what you were doing, not only were you picking up the waste, you were stopping and asking, what else can we do, what else can we do? And also, I'm a witness that you do go over and beyond your call of duty because sometimes I'm one of the ones who hear the truck run out of my house and roll the trash out as the truck is passing, and they stop and still get it, so I want to thank you.
That is one of the hardest things that you have to deal with in customer service, and, and as I try to tell the ladies, we try to answer the phone on the third ring, and we actually have six lines that come in, and sometimes there's Debbie and Tara, and then Tim or myself, and sometimes it's just myself, sometimes it's Tim, sometimes just Debbie and Tara, but we do try to answer them on the third ring. We may have to push you on hold, but, and we do appreciate it because our guys, they run their route sheets, and if they see you, they will try to stop, but it's always funny because we'll have some people call up, and they say, he didn't stop, and they're going to the other side, and we're driving on the, on the European side, and they're up there talking to the, to the driving side, and they're shouting through the truck, so, or they didn't save me. But yes, ma'am, we try to do, they do a good job, and it's very tedious, and when you look at the miles that we drive, it's not so much we have made it easier physical, but the mental part and just the, just the driving part and exposure part of what we do every day is very, very, very hard.
Just curious, I know your department is one of the departments that's going to take a big hit. Do these employees, specific employees, know who they are at this time?
No, ma'am. We have not even begun that process. There's a specific process. This is a proposed budget. The only thing that, as far from the employee's standpoint is, is that on the third and final reading, whichever, whatever's decided, then that's when the decisions will start to be having to be made, and that is not even, employees have not even been, we haven't even looked at that part yet. The only thing that I do is, when we did look at the budget, is when we started analyzing, is when we look at going to a four-day work week, I do have to look at the routing efficiencies that are gained. And so we sort of got some of that game plan doing, but so when we, we got started, it would be ready to be implemented, but far as employees, no, ma'am.
Any other questions, comments regarding solid waste? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. The airport fund at 182 to 186, their salary schedule's on page 54. Mr. Gerke, you're welcome.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for allowing me to come here today and talk about the budget. When you talk about the airport priorities, you always start out with safety, and that's always our number one priority out there. I'd like to discuss a little bit of our goals and priorities for this upcoming year. And the first one, of course, is because of the economy and, and the pride that we have as an airport and being one of the few self-sufficient airports in the state of Tennessee. Our budget is made up only of the revenues from fuel service, fuel sales and the hangar rents, and it's, we're probably one of four airports in this state that are able to, to take pride in that fact. We are going to be, the airport commission is going to be looking at and has already proposed some hangar rent adjustments, and we made some changes in how we do those hangar rents this year, trying to target some of the newer hangars and older hangars that we have, that we saw that we had lower occupancy rates than we, than we wanted. So we're going to try to increase that. Again, that goes against the debt service to pay off those TML bonds that we took out to pay for the construction of those hangars. We have one of the nicest hangar areas, complexes in the state with very user-friendly services such as aircraft washes and restroom facilities out there, way out on the south end of the airport. One of our goals this year is to complete the airport layout plan. That plan started in 2008. It is very complex with a lot of issues regarding runway length and also looking at a runway pavement that is deteriorating, and we need to address that here shortly. And we'd like to do, to save money and time, address both of those at the same time if possible. There are many steps, though, before we do that, and another thing that we will try to be accomplishing is environmental assessment, should everything go through and be approved and adopted through the airport layout plan. Part of the airport layout plan, as I see it as the airport manager, kind of from a different perspective, is what we've seen in the economic downturn of the last few years and with increased fuel prices going up, it's made a, a very huge impact on general aviation. We are very heavily situated and concentrated at Murfreesboro Municipal Airport on smaller, privately-owned aircraft. On a daily basis, we do get business aircraft in to come in and check on the various businesses and stores and everything that have popped up in Murfreesboro over the last 10 years. We, we are not able to service those aircraft and those businesses as well as we should, and therefore, we're losing out on some revenue, and that's an important part, again, of us being self-sufficient and being able to provide the services and economic development in this community. For example, today, we had four business aircraft come in. Four, all four needed fuel, we sold over 1,000 gallons of fuel, brought in over $3,800 worth of, of fuel sales in four operations. And another way to look at it is those four aircraft only had eight operations at our airport, either takeoffs or landings. We have to fuel a lot of smaller aircraft to make those kinds of dollars. The other part is to complete repairs on hangars number two and three. These are hangars that were built back in the 70s and are needing repair. One of the, one of the things that we take pride in is being what we call a front door to the community, to the city. And these hangars are in need of repair, some leaky roofs, and just a good paint job will do a lot of good. In hangar two, just, just to bring you up to date on, on some interesting things that occur at our airport because of one of our largest tenants, Middle Tennessee State University, and their aerospace program. Hangar two was, was a smaller hangar built back in the 70s, as I said, for their, for Middle Tennessee State University's purposes there. And they've had several different classes in that hangar, going back to maintenance programs and classes to maintaining their fleet of aircraft. They recently, just a few years ago, built a new hangar to, to maintain their fleet of aircraft, over 25 aircraft that they use, that use on a daily basis for training that they maintain. But they are, they are creative, and we, we try to work with them the best we can to, to help each other. It's a great partnership. That, that hangar has been turned into a flight simulator lab. There are some of the greatest simulators that you can see out there in the industry that they use on a daily basis for training. This is a very cost-efficient way to do flight training. It is not as expensive for the students as it is to rent the aircraft as they do on a daily basis. And the university has risen to such a high notoriety in the industry that even the FAA has hired them and their instructors to teach them how to fly the new glass cockpit, the latest technology of aircraft, which their students are flying. And they have gotten excellent reviews on that. That is in hangar two. And so it's very important that we keep that roof from leaking. So in our budget, a lot of our capital improvements and, and things that we're looking at this year is to really position ourselves, take care of some of our facilities, and position ourselves in the next few years to be able to implement some of the plans that are on that airport layout plan. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Gerke, who's the outstanding airport manager?
Yes, and I, and I would like to add that we did, in this process of this ALP, we did budget for 2009 and 10, an amendment that would be coming regarding the ALP of around $19,500. That amendment will not be an expenditure of this year, nor will we receive the state funding that will go along with that amendment. So we are, we are going to, I've given Mr. Lyons, Mr. Crumley, and Melissa some adjustments to that, and this is a, it will literally take $19,500 out of this year's budget, put it into next. That's $17,550 of state funding, and the local share is $1,950. The capital outlay or whatever for this year was $20,140, and we're going to make that to $22,090 proposed for 2010, 2011. And I believe that will appear in your final draft or the last draft of the budget later on in this process.
All right, any questions?
Mayor, hadn't Mr. Gerke been named Airport Manager of the Year here recently?
Yes, he has. I'd say he is an outstanding airport.
I guess that goes along with our Mayor of the Year. Senior Mayor of the Year.
All right, shorty.
We need a recess.
Speaking of recess, if there are no questions, we'll take a break at this time.
Thank you.
All right, we are back, and at this time, we'll go to the Capital Improvement Fund, and that is found on page 190 to 192 of your booklet. Chris Lyons?
This is actually a accounting fund where we track some of our capital projects. This isn't a traditional budget like we, we see with the other departments, but one that's required for the audit. We've been budgeting this way just for the past couple budget years, but this is more a clearinghouse for some of our capital expenses that you see elsewhere.
All right, are there any questions of the Capital Improvement Fund? If not, you have the Community Development Fund, page 193 to 197. The Community Development Fund, are you ready, Mr. Callow?
Your timing is impeccable, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
Your building, budget building blocks are completely compatible with the statutory goals of the Community Development Block Grant Program. Decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities. You recently approved our consolidated plan that articulates the city's strategy for converting that vision into action. And for that work, our CDBG allocation for the next fiscal year is $700,162, an increase of $58,251, or 8.3% over the last year. This is, if I'm not mistaken, this is either the, the largest CDBG allocation we've ever received or very close to it. It certainly recoups about 10 years of cuts. The city's policy throughout its history as a CDBG entitlement, that is, since 1984, has been to make assistance using these funds available throughout the city of Murfreesboro. There are income-eligible residents living in every census tract in this city who need the services provided either directly or indirectly from CDBG and other programs administered by the Community Development Department. Almost from the beginning of its involvement with CDBG as an entitlement, Murfreesboro has chosen to give priority to owner-occupied rehab, housing rehab, and assistance to first-time home buyers. Public input consistently supports the city's continued decision to make these two programs the standard bearers for the Community Development Program, and we propose to continue both as the centerpieces of our CDBG-funded housing programs. We propose to continue funding the Micro Enterprise Technical Assistance Partnership with MTSU Small Business Development Center and our Micro Enterprise Loan Fund. The long-term goals of the Micro Enterprise Program are to assist low-income entrepreneurs start businesses, create jobs, and to help borrowers establish credit histories which will make them more attractive to commercial lenders. CDBG regulations allow grantees to allocate up to 15% of the current grant and program income to subrecipients to conduct public service projects. Each year, the city invites proposals from qualified government and nonprofit agencies and organizations. The awards process is very competitive. City looks for projects which will, one, benefit our low- and moderate-income residents, two, fit with the city's goals and priorities as set forth in our consolidated plan, and three, prove their usefulness to the point that other funding sources will recognize the benefits and take over funding responsibilities. Education and employment are key factors when trying to break the cycle of poverty. To that end, we are committed to funding programs over the- To that end, we are committed to funding pro, programs over the next five years which will promote literacy, financial literacy, and self-sufficiency. Partners in these efforts include the Murfreesboro City Schools, Murfreesboro Housing Authority, and nonprofit agencies will, which will conduct programs to sub-receipients. In conjunction with the preparation of our recently submitted, uh, consolidated plan, cons, uh, the city, uh, commissioned an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. Consultant found that the city, uh, the, found the city to be affirmatively furthering fair housing, and commented that the city of Murfreesboro has attained a level of racial diversity that most cities its size can only envy. The consultant did provide recommendations, and several of those are directly related to the delivery of excellent customer service. We will be incorporating a fair housing module into the customer service training sessions for city employees, and we've already begun rewriting the fair housing pages of the city website.
Thank you, Mr. Calo. Any questions regarding Community Development? Mr. Calo, you did an excellent job, and certainly, we get a, uh, just a tremendous amount of information from you. Any questions? Mr. Calo, you've answered them all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The Gateway Fund.
The Gateway Fund is another capital fund similar to the Capital Improvement Fund you looked at just a moment ago. It is where we collect the information on the activities in the Gateway area. Uh, I like what Councilman Washington said about you have to spend money sometimes to make money. And rather than say spend, I'm gonna say invest. And the city has invested very wisely in its, uh, activities in the Gateway. Using the two thousand nine property tax data before the reappraisal, one-hundred-and-thirty-two-point-six million dollars of new construction in the Gateway area. That generates four percent of all your property taxes in the city of Murfreesboro. And it's, it's an incredible opportunity still in front of the city for the development of the balance of the property. I'll be collecting some numbers in terms of how many acres are left and, and the potential for those acres based on historically what we've seen from the acres already sold, uh, but this is your fund. We're not predicting a huge amount of activity in the fund, either expenditure or sales, although I think, uh, the city manager has had a couple of phone calls recently inquiring about land in the Gateway.
Well, uh, congratulations to, uh, obviously, Mayor Joe Jackson and Mayor Richard Reeves for their foresight in working with the council and, uh, with our city manager, Mr. Haley, and department heads, because that has been a tremendous investment and will continue to be a tremendous investment. Uh, things are not gonna stop out there, although they may slow. Uh, we still see a tremendous amount of activity there. And not only four percent of the taxable property in Murfreesboro, but nearly two percent of all the taxable property in the county, and that is not including the medical center or the Embassy Suite Hotel and the Conference Center, which are both, uh, in lieu of our, either tax exempt. So, that is quite an accomplishment.
Thank you.
And Vice Mayor takes all the credit.
Mayor, I think something we, we look at, too, is, I think we got a report from Mr. Crumley about two, three months ago that showed the sales tax revenue that's generated on, on the avenue, the area out on, in the Gateway, and I think it is, if I remember, it's one-point-seven million or one-point-four million for the city of Murfreesboro, two-point-three million for Rutherford County.
That's your property tax collection.
Okay.
Uh, we also, I think, reported to the hotel motel tax collections. A little more difficult to go store by store in the avenues and in the rest of the Gateway area and say, "This is precisely how many dollars of sales tax were collected," but it's a large.
The reason why I bring that up, if we look at our budget that we have right now, and if we had not, as a council, and was not on the council at that time, but had not invested to do that, I, I look at where this budget could be right now without the property tax and the sales tax revenue. And, you know, I, I know that people look at and, and sometimes wonder why that we would wanna spend the money that we did on landscaping in the Gateway area, but the thing that I, I look at is that that's already paid for itself. It's paid for itself just this year, just in property tax and sales tax revenue, and that money will continually come in year after year after year. So, you know, if we can have more investment like that, that's, that's something that will allow us to come out of this recovery quicker than, than what we, you know, what we're seeing.
All right. Thank you. The TML Loan Fund.
This fund accumulates the borrowings that we've done for our projects, and we estimate about how much we think will be left on our current borrowing, plus the full amount for our upcoming proposed borrowing. And we just estimate that is the, the borrowing proceeds and capital outlay projects to match that.
And the operating costs are... Those are interest payments or what? What are the operating costs there? Page two, one.
Uh, that's the transfer to debt service for any money that was repaid by developers or, uh, other reimbursements, leftover monies from the interest earned while they've set in the bank account as, you know, the money came in before it was spent out. And whatever's left over like that, we have applied to our debt service to help pay that debt service off faster.
Any questions regarding the Loan Fund? Fleet Service Fund. It's on page two-ten to page two-fourteen. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. The Fleet Service Department currently has thirteen full-time employees. We have, one of those is serving an active duty in Iraq currently. The city owns approximately seven-hundred pieces of equipment that is maintained by the Fleet Service Department. Of course, we operate out of the facility out at Florence Road. One of our accomplishments this year is we installed a new fleet maintenance software in August of oh-nine. This software helps us keep track of all of the city equipment and its usage. It's also improved our preventive maintenance program, which will help us to identify problems during the preventive maintenance, thus lowering our breakdowns and road calls. And we can now also provide reports on utilization, maintenance costs, cost per mile, to help department heads target vehicles and equipment that are no longer cost-effective to keep. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
All right. Fleet Service. Any questions regarding Fleet Service? Mr. Washington?
Rob, have you all considered an ABL-type software?
Pardon me?
ABL-type software for those vehicles? You know what I'm talking about?
I do not.
He does.
Automated Vehicle Locator.
Right.
Several, uh, in this particular year, Rover will be, Manny will be putting on their buses a little bit different technology. It uses the GIS system.
Right.
But a vehicle locator. Uh, I'm, I'm not aware of other parts of the fleet that we're using some sort of automated, automated vehicle location.
I believe Solid Waste is using some GPS units for, for tracking.
And proper police.
All right. Any questions regarding the budget or the Fleet Service Fund? Mr. Hart, we appreciate your department and, uh, being out there with so many other departments and, uh, trying to keep up with everything. Seven-hundred-and-fifty vehicles may not sound like much, but it's a ton of vehicles. And, uh, I am certain that each individual driver wants a premier service every day, and I know you're doing that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Please pass along our thanks to your folks.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes the budget overview for this evening's, uh, council meeting. We now will go to other business, which will more closely parallel what we ordinarily do at a council meeting. And as such, you have the minutes of the May sixth regular meeting. If you've had an opportunity to review those minutes, are there any additions or corrections? And if not, is there a motion to accept those minutes as they have been presented?
May I move to be approved? Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gelli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to amend Stratford Hall Phase Five's PRD located along Charleston Boulevard east of Old Laskassus Highway.
Some move. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gelli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage again on second reading an ordinance to amend the West Lawn PUD located, uh, west of Veterans Parkway.
Move his passage? Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gelli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage again on second reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Old Fort Parkway and west of St. Andrews Drive to Commercial Highway, CH.
Some move. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gelli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Old Fort Parkway and west of St. Andrews Drive to a PRD.
Move his passage? Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gelli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to amend Section twenty-four, Article Four of the zoning ordinance dealing with the historic district HI, H-one, HI, all right? Sorry.
Move, move his passage? Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gelli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code Appendix C, City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee Employees Revised Pension Trust Agreement, Section one dash oh-eight, one dash twelve, and two dash oh-one, dealing with borrowing officers and employees employed on or after July first, twenty-ten, from participation in that plan.
Mayor Bragg, members of the council, we have taken to you some measures, and we'll be bringing more to you in the immediate future, implementing your decision and the Pension Committee's recommendation to adopt a defined contribution plan for employees hired on or after July first. One of the steps we need to do is accomplished by this ordinance, and that is to amend our existing pension plan, a defined benefit pension plan, so as to make clear that new employees or new city officials, council members or officers of the city, would not be under the existing plan but would be under the new plan. These three sections need to be amended to achieve that. Uh, Mr. Godwin and our city actuary and I all agree that these are the necessary sections that need to be amended. I would remind the members of the council that we had brought to you a restatement of the existing pension plan, uh, making a few changes, that we have had to send to the IRS for approval. They have not yet given us approval to finally adopt that. When they do give us that approval, we'll be coming back to you with another ordinance amending, uh, or, sorry, a motion to amend the restated plan, so you'll be saying the same issue again. But the point of adopting this at this time is to get it clear, uh, in time for three readings plus fifteen days before July first, so that there isn't any doubt about the status of any such new employee or officer of the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions to Ms. McGannan regarding this ordinance?
Any questions? If not, is there a motion? We pass this ordinance on first reading tonight.
So move. Second.
Have a motion and second by Mr. Washington? Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gelli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Ms. Wright, what about beer permits tonight?
Mayor, we have one tonight. It's a new location. It's a hotel at three-twenty-five North Thompson Lane, and they have met all of our requirements.
All right. Having met all our requirements, is there a motion that we accept this beer permit application?
May they be approved? Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gelli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. You have before you, I believe, a list of the statements to be considered for payment. Are there any questions regarding any of those bills to be paid? Then is there a motion that we pay the bills?
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gelli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Regarding board and commission appointments, I would like to reappoint Larry Wilkerson and Chris Massaro to our Old Fort Golf, uh, Commission.
Some move. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gelli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Any other business from the council or staff to come before the council at this time? I would note to the city council that we will have a brief attorney-client meeting at the end of this council meeting, and I ask you to stay afterwards to meet with the city's attorney. Any other business to come before the council at this time? If not, you're adjourned.